Are you good, Counselor Lutz? Okay, we had a delay. That's with difficulty, so it's 7:25. And we call the committee of the whole meeting for June 8th, 2023. For the weekly dinner meeting, but to acknowledge this Stuyac McMawkeye ancestral in Osceada Territory of the McMaw people. And before we start tonight, I want to take a moment to recognize those affected by the wildfires in Nova Scotia. Need to be thankful for firefighters, first responders, DNR, and the volunteers that went above and beyond during these horrific times. We're very fortunate. So with that, we have regrets from Counselor Ramsey. And Counselor Lutz is joined by Blaisen. Yes. Just those regrets. So we have a few amendments to the agenda. And bear with me. If I miss any, it's beauty or anyone else, please let me know. We are going to add.
Maybe it's already there, so we're just gonna add external.
So for 9C, we're gonna add C, external, two amendments, in addition to the internal. We're gonna add under business 9M, P cap. And also add under business 9N, library. Am I missing anything? With those amendments, I'm looking for a motion, please, Counselor.
But we put the agenda as amended.
Moved by Counselor Osborne, a second, please. Second, Counselor Rossman. Discussion on the motion. Question as you call, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. For disclosure of interest on the agenda items. There you go. We're going to item number five, approval of amendments to meet the whole May 11th, 2023.
Uh, I just have a few stories of 7A, should that not be Pat Hartman, not Richard Hartman?
Patrick Carling, it felt wrong several times.
Yes.
And, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
Under 9, Miami, uh, grant review of Oxford plan to keep staff in town, might offering affordable housing. Like, Ox, it wasn't the town of Oxford, if I'm not mistaken, it was Oxford, there was a food station? Yeah, still there, that, plus remember, as just brought up earlier, Richard Carling is not Richard Carling. And, uh, is, is there something a couple of the, but, um, anyway, we can defer it and have it approved in another meeting.
What's the consensus, do we defer or we can quote the changes?
I have one more change, if we're gonna defer it. Or we can defer it and do it all, I don't care.
If you need to defer it, we just note the changes and we'll be made.
Consensus?
Well, I didn't hear that, sorry.
I thought we could approve it with noting changes.
Sure. Then I have one more change.
Okay, gotcha.
Um, if it's 9, under business, um, staff reports. Um, one. Um, page 36 at the top. Um, Counselor Osborne required about a few items listed below, which Randy stated, should we get the answers into factor? When I listened to the tape, it said that Randy would bring it back to the table. So I'm, if you can just bring, get that changed, that would be great.
Which one is that, Counselor Osborne?
Uh, top of page 36.
Look, those one, two, I'll say three changes. I'm looking for a motion, please.
Make that motion that we approve at the minute of the committee of the whole session for Thursday, May the 11th, 2023, as amended.
Second, please. Second for Deputy Mayor Chapman. Discussion on the motion. Question as we call, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. The announcements of accomplishments, none. Presentations, we do not have any tonight. We have two written petitions of correspondence. The first one is from Rising Tide Society request. Do you want to speak to that? This will be.
Okay, so we received the request, and it was specific to the public works building. So what we had is, we had a conversation with our building official. And he stated that we can't use that for the requested use, usage, because we would have to change the washrooms and it would be pretty significant. So I'm just, I'm going to read his email. It's in the package, but, um, we would have to consider a change in use that is at least part of the building and created an additional tenant space, changing from an office group, which it currently is, a group D, to an assembly use, a group A, under the National Building Code, Nova Scotia Building Code regulations. So both of these actions trigger the requirement for a building permit and require the space to be brought up to today's building codes. So this would include, but not be limited to barrier-free entrances, barrier-free washrooms, fire-rated separations between the units. And there may be additional items. So, um, while possible, it's a significant, significant cost to bring that up. However, having said that, and this is just for discussion purposes, we, last meeting, we got notice that one of our tenants in the community center building are leaving. They were paying $400 a month for a space up there, so in July, and it's showing that some time that space could potentially be available. So we're certainly willing to work.
Any questions, Counselor?
So does that need discussion regarding for counsel and then approach forward?
My understanding, I just bring forward it for discussion. I'm open.
And I just have one question with the building. Is there, have we ever thought about designating that as a heritage building?
Yes, we've gone through a lot of research into that.
Okay.
We have no original plans, there's a lot of requirements for that designation. So we have done that.
And it's a no-go?
Not at this point. Again, there are a lot of requirements to get it to that, that stage.
Okay.
That doesn't mean it's dead, we can certainly look at it again, but it was only a little at that point. Because there's a lot of hoops to jump through.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor.
Just wondering if we if this should be an item on the future council section, like to talk about an alternate phase or making an official agenda item?
Okay, um, I thought that we would probably meet with the Arts Society first and kind of have a conversation, because if they're not interested in anything that is there, I'm not sure that we should have an agenda item, right?
Sure, that's fine.
We'll meet first and then refer back.
Thanks, yeah, we'll do that, right.
We're good to move on? Moving on to 8B, that's the Colchester Ground Search and Rescue Association letter came into me, share with all counsel. That's an annual request from the Colchester Search and Rescue Association. So that's for information purposes only. With that, move to 9A, so we're going back to Ms. Pootie.
Can I just ask a question about that? So they're asking us for $7500. Have we, have we done anything to them before?
Yes, it's been, since I've been here, it's been an annual.
Okay. I don't think it's a donation.
No, not in that.
Okay.
Connected to shared service.
Yes, contribution, yeah.
And I asked the same question, that this, at least the last two years, I'm not sure beyond that.
Yeah, four years, at least since I've been here.
Thanks, actually, the long was a lack. I think it took place while I was on the table.
Okay, we'll want to 9A, and more to Ms. Pootie.
Okay, so I've submitted my report, are there any questions, I guess high level, just Dexter's approved an extension on their bid for Riverside. I sent the request in immediately after our last meeting to desulk the project, that's a four or five week turnaround. One thing with the well-sourced study, in meeting with Jeff and WSP, we kind of quickly, and we will deal with this later in, in the meeting. We kind of quickly split out the last phase, instead of it being, uh, design, tendering, and commissioning, and construction, we were able to pull out the engineering portion of it at the beginning, which is the design and the tender package, which allows us to turn around and apply for funding for that portion. So it's got two purposes, we're getting funding from P cap that we know is open, and it actually closed yesterday. And secondly, it's timeliness, right? So we're not waiting for a huge project, a multimillion dollar project, for funding that could potentially, like Riverside, be three to five years. So then we are absolutely ready to move forward with the project when and if we get the bigger funding. But, that's some good news. Complaint process, so we implemented just a very tentative and simple complaint process that seems to be working, we get people to fill out a form, so we have the details, and then Avery and Pat, building officials, come in helping deal with those. And the boundary review, so I don't think that's really an update, though, we've got the extension till July 31st, we've got a lot of uptake, I think, in surveys, which is incredible, so good work, Erin. And with the boundary review, of course, in the business is the rescission of the past motion.
That's for Osborne.
I have questions on the complaint process and the boundary review, I can hold my boundary review questions until later, if you wish.
Sure.
Um, complaint process, how, is this the one, is it being communicated to the public and how? And then how do counselors bring residents' concerns forward? Are we still forward them to you as we have been as the interim CAO?
This is a first step, first phase, very preliminary complaint process, it is on the website, it has not been communicated because it's not robust yet. But what we are doing is that, instead of counselors bringing the concerns to us, is I would ask that you suggest that the residents bring the complaint to us. Because if we can get firsthand the details of the complaint, they sign the complaint, it's absolutely confidential, then we have the documentation that we can have to whoever, and most of the complaints will be handled by Avery and Pat. Then at least we can send it to the people that are required to be. And, and passing them. So again, I just want to reiterate, it is the start, we want to start to have a process. And I'm hoping, as the notes say, that Trill has tentatively agreed to allow us, I'm not sure if it, I suggest everyone go on the Trill site and see the complaint process, because not only it's electronic, it's easy to do, it's click and pick your type of complaint, it also maps it, and on the map, it tells you at what stage of the process your complaint is in. So they have tentatively said that we can direct Stuyac residents there, it'll map the Stuyac site, it'll be held by them, but the information will be transmitted back to us.
So a couple of follow-ups on that. As I view my role, if a resident brings concerns to me, I'm certainly gonna forward it on. That's how I view my role as a counselor, to help residents in the town bring their concerns forward. So I probably will continue to do that. But my question is, I guess that's great, I love the online form, but I also know residents like to remain anonymous, so is there a way for them to remain anonymous?
Because they know what happened. They are anonymous. You have to put your name on the complaint, but it goes nowhere.
Okay.
Yeah, so I guess that's not technically anonymous, so no, they're recent, and that is the standard practice that I've seen with any municipality with the complaint process. And again, I am gonna stress that you bringing forward an issue on behalf of a resident is third-party information, so whenever you pass information on, something always gets skewed. So we prefer it to be direct communication with the resident. It's just way easier to get it from the resident, in their words, exactly what's happening. That would be my suggestion.
And again, I will say, my role as a counselor, if a resident brings a concern to me, I will forward it.
Will you still need?
Yeah, yes, we could take one, yeah.
Any complaint forms in place now?
Yes, it's at the front desk and it's online.
Any other questions for the concerns? Here none, you can move into financial and wait back and speak.
Okay, so very, very, very short report, May is audit month, so for the last four weeks, we've been working with the auditors, so far they don't have any issues, so just a lot of time taken up with the audit, but they, there is one big item that we have to do, which is new to the audit, which is asset retirement obligations, so that may push what we normally would expect our financial statements to be presented, that may push the timeframe slightly. I only actually have one thing that I have to get to complete that, so I'm hoping it doesn't, but otherwise, we're on schedule.
Thank you. Moving on to 9B, Ben's not here, but could you?
Hello.
How are you?
Good, how are you? Just wanted to highlight that we received the funding for the feasibility study for the community transit. I'm meeting with Sue, who's the executive director of Colchester Community Transit tomorrow, so hopefully she'll give us some insight on what's required in this partnership where it's under her license. Summer camps are all full, sports are getting close to full capacity, senior games are on their way right now with the closing banquet next week, Volunteer of the Year, I nominated Mark Crozier, and then we have a new playground that's been installed, the fencing will be removed hopefully tomorrow, so kids can use that down at the Stuyac grounds. Splash pads hopefully being opened, it was supposed to be June 9th, so I don't know if that's gonna happen, but hoping to be operational by the 16th of June. And floor lock replacement, again, was scheduled for this week, pushed back a little bit, but hopeful for next week.
Erin, I would just like to say that your funding update is pretty amazing, and that's this fiscal year, so please thank me.
And it looks amazing, and I'll probably utilize it this summer, not personally, but thank you, Erin. Public Works, Jeff is not here? Yes, sorry.
Um, just a couple of questions for you, finally. The Volunteer of the Year, when does the close happen?
So the first deadline was May 23rd, and most people submitted up at that point, and it did get extended till the 12th, so Monday.
Okay, and so if people have other names, how will they submit?
They can submit them themselves through the initial Volunteer of the Year online link, which I can share. But if they want it to be specifically to the town, they can reach out to me before, before we submit usually. And then I have drafted a volunteer nomination form, so then if those ever come in, which hopefully they will, we can take them all that come leading up to the deadline, and then we can, as a council, decide who can issue this.
But this year, it's done?
Yeah, we have submitted ours.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Lutz, I know you're on Zoom, I'll leave you, any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Well, the Public Works, Jeff is not here, so back to Ms. Pootie, please.
I went through the report, and there really isn't anything of significance. He has listed everything they've done, they've been extraordinarily busy getting prepared for asphalt patching, the beautification of the town, so I'd like to personally thank him for doing the flooring in here, and the guys, and an amazing cleanup today, and they did it in an hour, so it's not taking away from their real jobs too much, but pretty amazing work they're doing.
Questions, concerns, Counselor Osborne?
Of course, I have two questions, do you know if the annual spring flushing has happened? Of the Hyden? Like, the question on? Okay. And I'm not sure if you're gonna be able to answer this question, but the list stationed on St. Andrew Street, there's a light, like a, I think it's a red light.
That was taken here today, or they were working on it today?
Okay, do you know what was wrong with it?
No.
Okay. I just noticed it was going all weekend, so I didn't know.
Nope, they were, that's what they were doing before they helped us with the updates.
Awesome, thanks.
One question, um, so the, the parking space looks free. Areas where there shouldn't be any parking, are those gonna be delineated in some way, or is that the next part of the traffic coming as well?
And so are you talking about in front of French pizza, and yeah, that can be part of the, like, Public Works is finished with the marking right now, so that would be part of that process, I think, when we do look at traffic coming?
That's right.
And I think that's hopefully one of the first things we look at with that CBC report.
Okay, any other questions for us before I ask for the motion? Erin Dunn, to have a motion, please, accept this report.
I'll make that motion, that we accept the staff reports of the committee of the whole, June 8th, 2023.
Moved by Counselor Osborne, a second, please. Second, Counselor Pootie. Discussion on the motion? Question as you call, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? So here. 9B, temporary borrowing resolution, back to Ms. Pootie.
Okay, so the temporary borrowing resolution is for the long-term debenture, long-term debt we anticipate using for Riverside. I have put the dollar value at the worst-case scenario of debt, but have been assured by municipal affairs that if we spend $5, that's fine, and the resolution or the certificate that's signed by the minister is just for the next year. But that, at least, we know that it's in place, because there is a timeline, usually 30 to 60 days for them to get that signed by the minister, so we don't want anything to hold us up if we can get moving on Riverside when we get the notice back from DMHA about the funding.
You have one question. Is there kind of a point this year in terms of seasonal, if we don't have things in place by October, November, if that needs to be deferred to?
You mean for the construction? Yes, well, yes and no. Jeff doesn't want to do any constructing during the winter, because it adds more costs. So we have reached out to Dexter, and potentially, we can get hard Riverside done before the winter, and then the balance of it in the spring. So we are working on that, trying to get it done this fiscal year, but that doesn't affect.
That's for Osborne.
Just to piggyback on that, so our funding is good until, I think?
2025.
Oh, okay, I thought it was 2024.
Okay, 24 or 25, I think the, I'd have to look into that, that question was asked last time, so it's on there somewhere, I'll send that out with my notes.
And you said, you know, even if we spend $5 a year?
Well, I'm just saying that the temporary borrowing resolution is, as I said, conservative, so it's the most they think we're gonna borrow, like, we can borrow anywhere up until that point. So even if it's $5, which it would never be, but it's there, just.
So we don't need it all, we don't borrow it all?
Right.
Okay, so is this just like, we're like?
Yes, the ministers are considering, they look at your debt ratios.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay, are we good for a motion? Okay, that, the motion, please.
All right, Ms. Pootie, I saw that the committee of the whole recommended that council approve the temporary borrowing, borrowing resolution as a productive.
I think, sorry, and part of that, you have to leave the temporary borrowing resolution as well, in its entirety.
That's why I didn't believe. You're on, you're on, oh my gosh. I don't have my glasses. You wanna be down my own. Uh, municipal council of this town, Syria, temporary borrowing resolution, amount $2 million, purpose Riverside Avenue infrastructure refurbishment. Where Section 60 says that the municipal government act provides that the council of the town of Stuyac subject to the approval of the minister of municipal affairs need order to expand funds for capital purpose as authorized by statute. Whereas the council of the town of Stuyac has adopted a capital budget for this fiscal year as required by Section 65 of the municipal government act, and are still authorized to expand funds for capital purposes identified in your capital budget, and whereas the council of the town of Stuyac is determined to borrow for the purpose of Riverside Avenue infrastructure refurbishment. Be it therefore resolved that under the authority of Section 66 of the municipal government act, the council of the town of Stuyac borrow a sum or sums not exceeding $2 million for the purpose set out above, subject to the approval of the Minister of Municipal Affairs, that the sum be borrowed by the issue and sale of debentures of the council of the town of Stuyac to Section 10, if the council deems necessary, that the issue of debentures be postponed pursuant to Section 92 of the municipal government act, and that the council borrow from time to time a sum or sums not exceeding $2 million in total from any charter bank or trust company doing business in Nova Scotia, that the sum be borrowed for a period not exceeding 24 months from the date of approval of the Minister of Municipal Affairs and housing of this regulation, that the interest payable on the board will be paid at a rate to be agreed upon, and that the amount borrowed be repaid from proceeds that the debentures were sold.
No, I think that was awesome. Could have a second, please. Second, the counselor's. Discussion on the motion.
Question?
Question as you call. All in favor? Close? Thank you. Moving to 9C, that's committee appointments. This one here. So in the package, we had. There's a motion?
So what, and then here in the plaque? Just the motion.
Just the motion.
Just the motion, so.
Yeah.
So with that amendment, we're looking at, I previously spoke to Counselor Lutz and Counselor Osborne. Counselor Lutz, correct me, please, I'm not correcting this, we'll take the appointed to audit, is that correct, Counselor Lutz?
Yes, I will.
And I spoke originally to Counselor Osborne in terms of business tourism and bylaw policy. What has come forward is that there's not an opening for business tourism.
Oh, okay.
Policy states, and Counselor, please, stepping if I'm saying this wrong. Policy states in Counsel Brumman, please step in if I'm saying this wrong. Counselor Colm went as a guest because of numbers. Policy states that only one counsel, is that correct?
Only one.
One, only one counsel. So not knowing that, I put that out, so that's why I did the amendment here. So it's only for Counsel Lutz to audit committee and Counsel Osborne for bylaw policy. We have two other external, which we can do tonight if counsel wishes, or we can amend chair, what do you want to do with that, Ms. Booker?
External?
Yes.
That's your call.
I got, I'll pull the table, the counsel table.
What would be external?
It would be library and northern waste, and I believe Deputy Mayor would be to take the northern waste, if there's no.
That's.
And Counsel Osborne, library.
I'd love to.
So with that, we'd have to re, redo the motion to add those two external components to it and take away the second amendment.
So amended?
As amended, yeah. So before I ask for that amendment, this motion, discussion. With that, could I hear that motion brought forward as amended, please?
So I would move that committee of the whole recommend a council to approve the following appointments to debate committee, effective immediately. Counsel Lutz to the audit committee, Counsel Osborne to bylaw policy, Deputy Mayor Chapman to solid waste, and Counsel Osborne, the external committees, sorry, Deputy Mayor Chapman to solid waste, and Counsel Osborne to the library.
It's moved by Counsel Brumman, I need a second, please. Second by Counsel Rogers Lane, discussion on motion. Questions as we call, all in favor? Opposed? So, thank you, Counsel. Back to number nine D, and that's the 101 Kitchener Street demo extension. Pass this back to Ms. Booker.
As a note, there is an amended motion that was included in your mailbox before you walked in for nine D.
Please.
Yeah. Okay, so we did receive today a request for an extension, the demolition extension for 101 Kitchener Street until the end of August. And as per Pat Voice, he has suggested that we add some conditions to the motion, and so those conditions are listed in the motion as suggested by our good official. Do you want me to list them, or do you want?
In this.
They're in the motion, yeah. In the amended motion, sorry.
Counsel Osborne.
I have a question. I actually attended the meeting where Pat spoke to the family today, and so I do have some questions just regarding the clarification, and did he provide a different recommendation than prior to him meeting with the family on May 24th?
So did he give you a follow-up from today?
Yes, he advised what was acceptable and what the process was. And they walked around the property, and I do believe he had a discussion about the conditions that we just discussed.
Right.
Some of the conditions are already met, is my understanding, but he's, the suggestion is to have that in the.
Just find the subjective, when it says entire property is cleaned up. I think it's all, it's really all subjective, so that's why I was asking if Pat gave the written report after he met with the members today.
That is, there was no written report, no? Okay. I believe that was in the previous order. And it certainly can be a clarification from counsel as you are doing the demolition order that is your purview, so if it's not clear, you can amend it.
No, I guess what I'm saying is it's subjective, someone else, someone might think, what I think is secure may not be what you think is secure, which may not be what the public thinks is secure, which may not be what Pat thinks is secure, so that's what I'm asking.
Well, at this point, he didn't have any concerns.
Okay. Okay. So if at some, he determined that it was no longer safe or that conditions of it had changed somewhat, he would at that point go in and say, you have to fix this up more or something?
Well, I'm not sure of the process with that, I'm not sure that he goes in every day. They are not here in town every day.
No.
So unless there was a complaint brought forward, I would anticipate that would be the trigger.
So he thinks it's safe as is?
Right, and he feels that it's met the conditions.
Yes.
Yep, and so as they go forward with the demolition, if there's a complaint received, he can go look at that again to ensure that they are following the conditions.
I mean, I can add to that if you wish, I was there.
We're, we're told problems?
Well, just to play the answer, Counsel, I would like to play a question. He did, he did, he did give some instructions to tighten the fence and to secure more enter post signs as well.
This is different than I thought it was going to be, because I thought this would, would, you know, he's a subject matter expert, so I thought he would say, yes, it's secure and it's safe now, which, you know, just the town, we're, we don't, we're not, we don't have any exposure to liability. And then also for the family, if, if he says it's secure, as I said, he's a subject specialist, then they wouldn't have any exposure either because an expert told them that it was secure and safe. So can he do that, or is it, is it an ongoing process where he, he will attend it?
Again, so this is a moving target. We are expecting a demolition of the site.
Right.
We do not have 24/7 monitoring of that, so I don't think that the expectation was realistic. He was there, he met with the family today, gave them instruction. So I believe if they don't follow the instruction, that's their risk. We are doing what the subject matter expert tells us to do, which is why we wanted to get him involved in the first place. This is his specific word for word directions, as I've included it in the package as well.
Okay.
Yes, if there's a complaint, we will have him go look at that.
Okay, so it'll be an ongoing process then, if there's a complaint?
Yes, yes, if someone sees that there is a safety issue, certainly bring the complaint immediately to the town and we will communicate with them. And they are typically only here two days, but they are very flexible in the work with the town that if it's a safety issue, I would imagine they would come out and do a site inspection if we received a complaint.
Okay, with that, are we ready to move forward with motion?
I'll make the motion that we move, the committee of the whole recommend to council that we approve the extension of the demolition order of 101 Kitchener Street to August 30th, 2023, with the condition that the site be secure from public entering the property until demolition is complete. The property has no hazard and the entire property is cleaned up, including the Sustory building.
Moved by Counsel Osborne, a second, please.
I'll second that.
Second to Deputy Mayor Chapman, discussion on motion.
Question.
Question as we call, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? To Counsel. Moving on to item number nine, business number nine E. And that is a note, mostly sent a motion to reduce the number of councils, and that is from the NSUARV municipal boundary review, number 24, 2023, and that's back to Ms. Booker, please.
Okay, so we had discussion at the last council meeting regarding the rescission of the motion, and as per Bruno, Bruno's rules, if we provide notice, we can rescind the motion. I will just make a note that this is a motion that, in my estimation, is a moot motion because the application was essentially rejected from the NSUARV because it was incomplete. Their recommendation, the NSUARV's recommendation was to seek legal counsel. We sought legal counsel, legal counsel said rescind the motion and start the process again, so we are starting the process again, so now we need to rescind the motion.
Counsel, Counsel Osborne.
Yeah. Thank you for that note regarding this to demotion. I think I asked the question, how do we rescind the motion? My question is, we do have a section in our bylaw regarding rescinding the motion. It's under Section 47. It clearly states that it has to be brought back to the council by the next meeting or reconsideration is law.
That's reconsideration, not rescission.
It's the, almost the exact same wording as what's in.
Yeah, well, there's two different things, is reconsideration and rescinding.
I'll move to the chair, bylaw and policy.
Well, I, I did some research as well, and I know it's not as clear under Bruno's rule of order. I think we have no choice but to rescind it because we didn't do the process properly to begin with. And so staff have got us on track, we're going to have our public engagement. I think we have no other choice but to rescind. It's not right, what we did. It's now not right, wasn't it? We didn't do it wrong, it's on purpose. So anything that I've been reading and trying to find, I think it's like a repeal as opposed to a reconsideration. So I think this would be in order to.
I just want to make sure that we're following our bylaws and our policies. That's in what?
Yeah, I believe the point is that this is an external direction we can give from the UARV.
Yeah, well, their direction was to seek legal counsel, legal counsel directive.
Back to her.
Yes, to rescind.
So I only see the part back from Jay.
It was a conversation I had, so you have, I am bringing forward the conversation that I had with our municipal council. There is no documentation.
And I have the same, I have the same conversation, just call up. So with that, I am looking for a motion.
So I move that the committee of the whole recommended council to rescind approval of the municipal boundary review application to reduce the number of councils from six to four dated November 24, 2022.
Let's move to Counsel Brumman, a second, please. Second to Deputy Mayor Chapman, discussion on motion.
Question.
Question as we call, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? For this, Counsel Osborne. Thank you, Counsel. Number nine F, police advisory board, you have in your package a letter from Mayor Christine Blair, municipality Colchester. You see that May 30th, subsequently Ms. Booker met with, what was his name? Jason, not Jason, Scott Fraser.
And Scott is, I think he was one day fresh. So Scott was one day fresh in the CAO role, so he was not aware of, well, he had, he was aware of the letter but didn't know the intention behind it. Their secretary, I think, or the note taker has suggested that if we don't agree with the letter, that we, and we as council and mayor, reach out to the letter explaining the situation and potentially how, if, if we want to stay as part of the regional police advisory board. Their issue was that due to town Studiak's lack of participation, they couldn't reach quorum effectively, there's, you're required to meet four times a year, so I think there was one or two meetings that because committee members did not show up, they could not meet quorum, so they have, that was the reason behind trying to split from Studiak in the regional approach to the police advisory board.
Just at 100th day, if I can. Back in the fall, there was a change at the council seat. Every two years municipality changes their feelings, and two other councils were appointed, they self-appointed a new chair, and myself and Mr. Bobo blocked that. It's not protocol, you have to go to a meeting if that happened, so I want that noted on the file to talk to your counterpart that there was a move by Colchester's council to put a chair in place to replace the existing member, and there was an opposition from back to back. Been a bit of history back and forth in the last six months. Definitely there was a lapse with members showing up from Studiak.
So with that in mind, that Studiak not being there would not likely have made there be no quorum. Like, does there have to be represented from every municipality to achieve quorum? Or is it so many people?
Numbers, and there was, there was a council, one meeting where there wasn't enough from Colchester of the three.
Right, so that, I find this theory disturbing.
I had a conversation with Mayor Blair with this two days ago, and she's kind of just trying to get her head wrapped around it for lack of a term, referring to, like I said, the gentleman's just been in that position for one, two days, now maybe a week, so I think there's a lot more discussion needs to be ahead. It's not their decision to make or our decision to make that, other than this year, if we have consensus, so I feel we need to draft a letter, if there are concerns with that, and then to get back with your counterpart and to their council. Because I'm very concerned of how the process has went down, quite frankly.
They are also doing an entire review of their police advisory board, so this is one small portion of it, but it's one portion that affects us.
And even if, like I think it mentions in here, the mass casualty commission and, I mean, that could affect us as well, you know, we know that the perpetrator of a casualty drive through town, you know, the number two highway, so I feel we'd be, it's not a very, it's a big disservice to us to not be heard of.
I understand what's happened, if we broke away or if that was deemed the process, we'd still have those number of meetings individually, so the representative, the RCP would have to meet individually with that committee and ours. And that was kind of reason, bring them together and have uniformity at that number years ago, so. It's a risk, they just, at least we have a chance to take it back, voice our concerns. Staff can maybe draft that letter and bring it back to council.
So I have a question, just because I think actually we talked about this at the last meeting because it was timely, because it was on CDC being reported on the police advisory committees and municipalities not having them. So what happens, like, sorry, I, like, do we send a letter back to the minister? Or do we send a letter back to?
Or do we send a letter back to Mayor Blair? And what happens if we do separate? We hold, we have to have our own police advisory board?
As my understanding.
Yes. And how many members are normally on?
Five or seven. Five or seven, and you meet quarterly. And the suggestion was to write a letter to their council as the first step.
But this has already gone to the minister?
Yes.
From their council, from.
Yes.
And that was my concern with Mayor Blair.
Yeah.
Lack of communication.
Because what happens if the minister's already made a decision on it in the meantime?
I guess we can see, you know, how that unfolds, what we need to document and have it, our concerns.
So when I draft this letter, because this seems like it's a timely issue, do I have approval to send the letter? Do I bring it back to council? What happens with that letter?
Why, why Tuesday night? I'm sorry, like that, I mean, that, does that give you enough time?
I think so. I think I can.
It's only Tuesday.
We already advertised that meeting Tuesday night to be for C V C L, do you want to?
But it's a full meeting, the gentleman said.
I understand that, counselor, but in terms of the flow, and do we need to bring it back to council?
Thanks, Paul.
It's a letter of approach, because it's related, then you'd be done, you know.
We don't usually approve the county council. If we give you a late date, right, then you have a collection, so. That's my feeling, yeah, yeah. I'm just wondering if, if we should be writing both the county, Colchester, and the city minister.
And one of the vulgarity there, here's on it as well.
Let me say, if he, if he's already made a decision, it takes too much hair.
This is number nine G. To Ms. Koki again, please.
Nine G is for information purposes. Counselor Osborne has requested some kind of information on fire evacuation routes. I reached out to E M O, originally E M O, that is their duty, needless to say. So what I did is, there are four reports that they are currently working on. One of them I put in your mailbox before, here, the regional emergency planning. And there isn't, they're working on evacuation routes. They only have a draft copy, in the next couple of weeks, they'll send it to Remap for approval, and they'll get that. So with that, okay, so I'll just continue with my conversation with E M O. What they're trying to do, so priorities, evacuation routes for wildfires. Wildfires are in the document you have as well, but this would be specific to that. And proactive messaging is the couple of things that they're working on. So back with the evacuation routes, they are looking obviously at a regional approach, but it's also suggested that Stuyak look at Stuyak. So the next planning and advisory committee will, that issue will be brought to them, and the discussion will be had there.
In the C V C L report, it does note extending some streets, which would, would it address that issue?
Yes, yeah, well, and that's certainly something that would be part of that evacuation route plan, and maybe could be, because of the safety issue, could be worked on sooner. Like, that may be some reason to push it forward. So the planning advisory slash development kind of thing is where we'd need to look for direction.
Counselor Osborne.
So obviously, the wildfires of late has brought a lot of questions. I know the street I live on, former C O Vogel was looking at, I guess, an egress road for another exit because St. Andrew Street is a dead end. And you have a lot of feeder streets coming on to St. Andrew Street, which will all feed into one. If there was a fire on one end or the other, people may not be able to get out because of blockage. It's happened in the past. Now, with an expanded subdivision being put in, you're going to have an additional X number of houses, the next number of cars. There are certainly other streets in the area that are like that. I think, I'm not sure if our street is the most wooded with the farmland, when I think of it, with the exception of Kent Road, obviously. So I'm not sure when the next planning and advisory committee meeting is.
The twenty-second.
Of this month?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. But I'm just wondering what happened with that planning? I know that, you know, Mr. Vogel was looking at that secondary exit route. Do you, do you?
No.
No.
Okay.
Great, you can stop. It's all wood, it's, it's getting heavily populated, too, if something happens and you live down the end. You're in trouble.
Really? Anything else, counsel? Thank you, Ms. Koki. Number nine H, sign authority, back to Ms. Koki.
So our policy, which I attached as well, requires two council members, well, actually, the mayor and the deputy mayor, and two administrative people to have signing authorities at all times. And specifically with my vacation and me being out of the office the last two weeks of June, I think it's timely and kind of proves the point that we do need to have a second signature in case something was happen while I'm in office. And I would suggest to the Erin, Richard.
I'll make that motion. I so moved that the committee of the whole recommend to council to approve, no, recommend to council to appoint Erin Richard Director of Community Development as the second administrative signing.
Move by Counselor Osborne, second please. Second, a counsel, discussion on motion. Question has been called, all in favor? Opposed? H, H R committee, Counselor Brumlin.
Just very briefly, the job advertisement for the C O position has been posted on several sites, and we are receiving applications. And as at about six o'clock this evening, we had about thirty-seven.
Any part?
Awesome.
Thank you, counsel. I looked at here and I seen an I, I looked down and go, that's not an I, because it's an L.
Here, honestly, do we have any applicants early on in previous course, too? I didn't say. You can meet in there.
Yeah, yeah.
Fifteen twenty-eight.
Yeah, I'm saying that, I must say that in my feed, the municipal information network came up, in my social media feed, with our, our posting. Yeah, so you'll use that, yeah. Yeah. How do we get on that municipal information network?
I sent the email around, I haven't been on it, so I have no idea, that's the instructions I got.
It wouldn't allow me to, not, not with dot net.
Because I could.
Yeah, it wouldn't let me.
I didn't try.
Any more discussion? Thank you. Nine J, this is the Torrance Committee, back to Counselor Brumlin.
Wanted to update everybody on some of our activities for the year, and we don't usually meet over the summer month, so just information. Unless you have a question.
I think the signs for the indigenous games, that's the, we're pretty forward.
When do you formally meet?
The, the first Thursday of the month at nine A M. And we meet here and.
And so you won't meet now until September?
Correct.
Thank you, Counselor Brumlin. Nine K, standardized communications, over to Ms. Richards.
So we reached out to Iris's communication firm just to see how we are delivering our messaging to residents and the public. So we did an audit of all of our social media, our website. They gave us quite a good document of recommendations and reviews. So it's all there, if you guys have any questions about it. I do, I, I find it quite interesting, the recommendations of putting all the Facebook pages into one, which I think makes sense for our staff, first of all, and if someone wants to follow that page, we can get everything there. Our website review, not as good as I was hoping, so they're suggesting we need an uplift of it, which we just had, so maybe we had do it, maybe that's a better platform anymore in comparison to other communities and municipal websites, but, yeah. So that's the audit. The next step that we're doing with them is a three-hour session on planning and strategizing and how we can better what we use right now with what we have for staff. And then moving forward after that, they would potentially do a marketing and communication strategy for us, show council and staff if that's beneficial, after we do the strategy sessions.
Can we move forward with some of the recommendations right now? Like, I'm thinking Facebook is something we could do. Does that need to be a motion, or is that operations that we could?
Just as in the side, we, a few years ago, had a couple of different people, and it was more of a volunteer, can't remember now, but was, look at our pages, and it indicated that we really should just have one page. And at that time, the page that did the best was Town Days. As opposed to the one that the town or recreation used. At that time, it was Town Days was our most popular page.
Yeah, they said in there that there's like fifteen hundred or so followers on the rec page and sixteen or eighteen on the, and they're probably the same people, so it makes sense to put it all in one, so.
So I, I guess, I just had a question, not about that, but what jumped out at me was the newsletter and how they, they really didn't think that we should still mail it out. And I thought, hmm, you know, our demographic, that we really do need to mail it out. So it was, it was interesting to read some of it, and, and it, so. Was this budgeted?
We have a marketing or, what line are you in?
Oh, some promotions.
Yeah, yeah, so it was in last year's budget, this was then, like, the process was started.
No, I thought it was, like, I've read it through a couple of times, and it was great. I think there was a lot of really good information in it.
Thank you. Number L.
Banking resolutions, so when I reached out to the bank regarding the process to change the, potentially change the funding according, they had suggested, suggested that our resolutions weren't up to date. So I have the motion. There were three resolutions, one was our credit card borrowing facility, operating overdraft, and another one was the lease line, and we had a conversation about that, and I think that's probably from the nineteen hundreds, the lease line. He hasn't heard of any municipalities using it or anything, so we'll just not, we'll drop that off of our, our banking. So there are two things that we'd like to have resolutions for. The first one is the credit card facility, it is currently at twenty-five thousand dollars. We'd like to increase that to thirty thousand dollars to provide an opportunity for Erin to have a credit card as well, since probably the most of the purchases that go through my credit card are recreation items. So that's a slight increase of the total credit card facility. And the second one is the overdraft, operating overdraft. We're just holding that at two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, I don't anticipate that we'll need it. If we need to have temporary borrowing for Riverside, which may, may happen, the funding is, you get to take draws from it, so we, but we may still have a point where we need to borrow, but there is a different banking tool that we can use for that, so I don't anticipate needing to increase the overdraft. Two motions here, yeah. And I so moved it, is everybody, am I?
I, I have a couple of questions. What is the current, what's currently on the credit card right now?
It's twenty-five.
So we have twenty-five, we owe twenty-five thousand dollars on the credit.
The credit card is paid off every month, it's just when we buy an item, for example, sorry to pick on you, Erin, but a recreation item that she gets on Amazon, because they're inexpensive, then they only take credit cards. So we pay it off every month.
So the limit total?
That's the limit, yes, yes.
And so if we pay it off every month, why, why are you looking to increase it, just to add?
Yes, because there's only two cards right now, so it's to add the third card.
So you can't keep the limit at twenty-five with three cards?
Well, we can if that's your decision.
I'm just trying to understand.
Yes, well, I'm going to say cyclically, right, our system can reach the limit. We, our past C O was limited numerous times with his credit card, so it just gives us a little bit of flexibility with spending. Again, this is all budgeted spending, and it's spending according to our procurement policy and within our limits.
So is, so I can wrap my head around this, so it's not thirty thousand per credit card?
No, it would be ten for each card, the total.
Oh, it is actually ten per card?
That, that's what we would suggest, yes. But the total facility with all three cards is thirty thousand.
And then before we get to the line, the overdraft, do we use the overdraft?
No.
Okay, so is there a reason why we need such a high overdraft?
That's actually extremely low for a municipality. Yeah.
Okay.
And.
It's been that way for quite a while. So we've had this for a while, just terrorizing people, not?
Up to date.
Okay. And so does this affect our financial indicators in any way?
Not at all.
So it would be actually three cards for a total of thirty, is that right?
Yeah.
For ten each.
With that, I am looking for a motion, please, counsel.
I so moved that committee of the whole recommend to council to approve the increase in the credit card borrowing facility with the R B C to twenty-five thousand to thirty thousand.
Move a deputy mayor, Chairman, a second please. Second, a counsel, Roger Lang, discussion on the motion.
Question.
Question has been called, all in favor? Two added.
There's the second, is there?
Oh, sorry. Counselor Brumlin, catch the gun. Second motion. Counselor, have a drop order, please.
I so moved that committee of the whole recommend to council to approve the current operating overdraft with the R B C of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
Over, Counselor Brumlin, second please. Second, a deputy mayor, Chairman, discussion on motion. Question has been called, all in favor? Opposed? Now we'll move on.
Okay, so the motions are, for these two are your pink piece of paper that I have in your next block. So M, as I mentioned. So M, as I mentioned in the min report about the well water study, we have. Split the project into a smaller portion, which is the engineering design and tendering package. So with that, June seventh was the deadline, so I did apply already for provincial capital assistance program. They require counsel of counsel resolution, but they do allow, because I noticed there was a check mark that it is to come. So I submitted the application anyway with the anticipation that I would get approval. However, if you don't approve it, then the application.
Is this budgeted anyway?
Yes, well, this is part of it.
This is the, yeah, the phase, like the permitting phase, is that?
No, that's what we're currently in, that it's a portion of the final phase, which is the engineering and. I think it was a hundred and forty thousand total. So this estimate is two hundred thousand, WSP is given us that. Actually, we could get fifty percent from PK, so that would be a hundred thousand.
This is Grant.
Yes, yeah, so it's a grant. The I have included the WSP quote that we sent in as part of that.
I'll make that motion. I so moved that the committee of the whole recommend that counsel approve the application for. Funding of the well water study fee five from the provincial capital assistance program in the amount of two hundred thousand plus eighty.
Move Counselor Osborne, a second please.
I'll second.
Second Counselor Crum, discussion on motion.
I have a question.
Question has been called. Thank you. We're in, back to Ms. Bookie, library.
Okay, so in my discussion, well, the main reason I reached out to Scott Fraser. Police advisory board was kind of just secondary, but was to discuss their position on the MOU for the library. Of course, again, he was one day and so he doesn't know about it, but what I did do is I gave him the letter that Charles had. The review and all of the points that he he didn't necessarily agree with or we agree with, which was, I guess, the biggest item on that. Is that they want Colchester wants to cap the capital purchase. That they're going to say, okay, it's X amount that we'll cover, any cost overruns would be borne by the town studio. So he has all that information to take to his counsel. And in that discussion, we also, the suggestion was that maybe architectural would be part of what we'd request for their funding, the sixty forty split. We budgeted one hundred percent of that architecture for Stuyak to. Pay for it. So in keeping with that and thinking of that, because we already have the architectural tenders out, we have them here at library, it has done some work. I thought that. Because they came in substantially lower than we thought last year, we have budgeted fifty thousand this year. And the range, I think, is twenty six to ninety thousand. I thought what we could do is move forward. I would recommend that we move forward with the architectural tender, that we have the library committee review the tenders, which I think they already have. Recommend to counsel who they would recommend for that architectural tender. And there's a couple of reasons. Financially, in order to plan, part of this architectural tender gives us the cost estimate. So at least now we can go to Colchester with a number and and not say, okay, here, here's your cap. We anticipate it's going to be this, we have a number. We'll add a contingency to it that may change with the market. But going forward, we can plan for it. If there's fundraising required, we have a picture of the library. It's easier to fundraise when you have at least one step into the plan instead of an ideal. That's what I was thinking when I was talking to Scott Fraser, so I thought I would bring that forward. And and also because we are getting some calls about the tender process and if we are going to award it or. Let it fight.
We got a site that we're.
Yes, the where the big, big library cafe.
I guess I'm, my only question was about. The cost of the architecture bid, I thought at one point you were going to split that with Colchester. But you're recommending we don't and.
Well, it'll expedite things. Let's just look at it. Budgeted. Well, it was never Colchester's intention. And it was always ours to keep pushing, which is what I think the delay has been. As we keep asking them to, they keep putting it on. Yes, they don't want it back, yeah.
We talked about this data, but that tangibles there, we have this, it's. So before I ask for a motion, any more discussion, Counselor Osborne.
Did you say that the dates of committee from twenty sixth and ninety?
Yeah. Well, actually, I think twenty, yeah, twenty and ninety.
That's what I was thinking.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I so moved that committee. I so moved that committee of the whole recommend that counsel approve the authorization. The library committee to bring forward a recommendation for awarding the library architecture bid, which will be funded solely by the town of Stuyak.
Move Deputy Mayor of Chatham, a second please. Second, the Counselor Crum, discussion on the motion. Question has been called, all in favor?
Why?
Close, so moved. Moving on to ten, bylaw on policies.
So I'm sorry, I just, I'm going to go down and man the stool. I don't think I'm needed here anymore. Are we okay with that?
Just make sure that.
Just make sure that when we get to citizen comments, I can.
And this is missing, my package is still totally transparent to you, so I'm going back to show you this thing. We have before us, number ten, A, two thousand four dash nineteen, human resource policy proposed amendments, March two thousand twenty three.
So on behalf of the committee, we propose the following changes to the HR policy. So the first one is in section thirty four oh one, where on call. An employee is required to be on call, they receive compensation of a hundred dollars per week of on call duty. And it has been previously fifty dollars for a number of years. The second amendment to the policy is. In section thirty six oh one, and this goes back to a lot of our discussions at budget time. Where staff salaries were increasing the same as the milk specialist CPI. So I think our understanding of some of the discussion around the table was that perhaps we should amend this clause to allow a minimum and a maximum. As opposed to in the past, the minimum has been below one percent and the maximum this year was seven point five. So this clause would make a minimum of two percent to a maximum of five percent.
Regard of CPI.
Correct, so if CPI is less than two percent, they would get two percent. And if CPI is seven percent, they'd get five.
Lock in between those two.
Correct. So can I answer any or attempt to answer any questions?
So I just have, so should we take the CPI out?
Well, no, because.
Like it's three point three.
Oh, yeah, but what happens if it's eight point five?
They get five.
Okay, so we have decided that and because I know there's a lot of discussion my first meeting about it. Right, so we took the input from council and from staff and created this to. We think it accommodates the suggestions that were made.
Okay, okay.
And it's clear going forward.
So if it became eight point five next year, we wouldn't have the same discussion that we had this year, fifty five percent.
Okay, okay.
Counselor Crum, I will see a motion for.
No, it's not in there, so.
That's a great one, I guess.
If we're ready, I would try.
Yeah, I don't want to get the discussion off, any other discussion or other questions?
Is the marketing lobby one there too? Is that?
Do you want me to make a motion?
Yeah.
Please.
Okay, I'll make a motion that the committee of the whole recommended counsel to approve the amendments to the. Two thousand, two thousand and four dash nineteen, human resource policy. Outlined in the policy report of June the eighth, showing section thirty one point oh one. Be amended from fifty dollars to one hundred dollars per week for on call duty. And that section thirty six oh one, the annual salary adjustment, will continue to follow. And a CPI as of December thirty first of each year, but will also include a ban with a minimum increase of two percent to a maximum of five percent. All right, I'll second it.
So moved by Deputy, sorry, moved by Counselor Osborne, seconded, seconded. Second, my Counselor Crum, discussion on the motion, please.
No question.
Question has been called, all in favor? Close, so moved.
The other thing, I was just kind of bringing every, or warning everybody, I guess, we will be bringing forward the marketing lobby bylaw. I think we'll have it for the July meeting and that it is a. But the same bylaws being approved by the county in Colchester, the town in Churro.
When do we meet?
Third.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thank you.
Ms. Bookie, if you're downstairs.
I am down here, I don't see any citizen comments at this point.
Thank you. Sorry.
Terry Samson, I just wanted to make brief two part comments in my capacity as Chair of Rising Tides Park Society. First, our board would like to thank council for your consideration of our space request and for the detailed report that was tabled tonight. We are keen to move our initiative forward in partnership with the town. So I'm going to bring this result back to our board and I expect that we will be in touch with the town to discuss the other options that was mentioned, so thank you for that. And secondly, we're pleased to report to you that our fundraiser, our first fundraiser we held on Saturday at Whistlers was a huge success. We had a full house, we had lots of public support, everybody had a great time. But especially we had a lot of support from our counselors. Who came out to have dinner and participate in our silent auction and make cash donations. We held a, an online fifty fifty draw, which was won by Deputy Mayor Catman. Who very generously donated her winnings back to our society, four hundred dollars, which we so appreciate. So we just wanted to say thank you to counselors for the support of this initiative and say that we really look forward to working with you folks. As we improve this along, yeah, so thank you, yeah.
Thank you, Terry. And I apologize, cut me off, I was looking up here.
You know, I'm such a little flower.
Okay, my report will be brief as a king, nothing but dates, it's in the back. This is the last meeting, the two HR meetings with Ms. Bookie. May nineteenth, we have an HR CEO recruitment meeting, the twenty fifth, release. Congratulations to Billy Dickey, who's celebrating her hundred birthday, hundred birthday, it's an incredible milestone to recognize. I wish her all the best. I attend the FCM in Toronto and this morning I sent a report to council as a follow up to that meeting. I met with Sandy Martin, the owner of MGM, in regards to grand opening, which is. June twenty eighth, I'll get back to you on that, anyway. Erin's going to provide a release on the website of that grand opening. This could be open enough to all council dignitaries and stay tuned for further announcements, Sandy's really positive. I attended a day of caring in Churro and Stuyak, both wonderful events, attended the fundraiser at the Rising Tides, Eric's Whistlers. I attended the N S S, N S C C students congregation, congratulations to the students from Stuyak and surrounding area. Released from the office of mayor statement to assistance of Stuyak regarding the fires in Nova Scotia and applicable related information. I met with the auditors two weeks ago, who found no irregularities in our audit reports for the second year. They want me to pass on that all was in order, they were quite impressed. Information they requested was set at the ready. I have scheduled time each Wednesday going forward in the town hall upstairs here to work. Anything I have to work on during the week to try to bring my my schedule together, that's for office time, phone calls, prospective meetings. And working with staff to have the signing of checks coming when can be at that date. I'll be attending the Atlantic Mayor's Congress in June and leaving after tonight's meeting to go to Amish for that next three days. Myself and I believe most counselors have received an update from the province in regards to the wattle fire additions. Thank you to Deputy Mayor of Chatham for chairing the June twenty fifth meeting, was at the FCM. Again, congratulations to students who graduated June fifth. Congratulations are extended to the spell there, Colchester's County Deputy Mayor. Last name, Tor, type of Jeff Stewart, and Jeff was acclaimed as the vice president of the FCM in trial with mental opposition. Congratulations again to Counselor Stewart. And finally, a thank you to for the staff, who I feel worked very hard, put this floor down in record time, most wonderful. That is my report and I'll now refer to Deputy Mayor Chatham.
Mary, I'm not sure if this is Deli. Did you have any citizen comment? I attended one or maybe two HR meetings. United Way Day of Hearing at the Mastodon Ridge, which was really a lot of fun. And I attended the business improvement meeting. And I attended the early part of the fundraiser for the Rising Tides. Which was, and I actually won it on the bid. I don't remember. And that's my. You were supposed to do that, right? But this is my Chinese, nothing on my.
You're very calm.
It's always not like this, just a note, Counselor Crum.
I also had some HR committee meeting, Town Day, and also the United Way Day of Hearing went off quite well, so thanks to Mastodon Ridge for. For taking the lead on that, we had about twenty, I guess, I think, people attend and nice music, so it was great. And I'd like to wish everybody a happy New York Festival weekend.
Oh, yes, don't forget what the birthday, the breakfast goes back to. Help them with the barbecue for four.
No, just looking forward to joining the committees and. No, just looking forward to joining the committees and hopefully some nice weather and no more fires.
I think we have lost Counsel.
She's there.
I'm here, I'm just in the dark, but I have nothing.
Thank you.
I'm having a difficult time talking, so.
Question to the council reports, we have no in camera, no motion reconsideration. Hearing done, we are adjourned at eight fifty-five. Thank you, counsel.
I'm the liar.
I was getting word with Counsel Roger Lang, as I noticed.